Well, I have a DD eight forty-five. Was the boss out there? DD two fourteen two.
Well, we're on the air, but actually, Michael, your clock's two minutes early.
Fast.
I know.
We'll be over it.
Yeah, too fast. You're going by... Okay. All right. So he has got the tape rolling there, so we're going to go ahead and get started a minute early. Welcome, everyone, this evening, and I'll call the meeting to order, and would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, could we get a roll call, please?
Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Colburn.
Here.
Okay. Well, I've been dealing with a little virus, so I kind of have a groggy voice, so I hope that holds out to these proclamations that I'm going to read this evening. First is a Public Works Week, and this is for May 19th through 25th, 2019. It all starts here. I think we have a poster up over there also for Public Works Week. Whereas the public works programs and services provided to our community are integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed community is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as drinking water treatment and distribution, wastewater collection and treatment, stormwater management, street maintenance, engineering services, and transportation systems; and whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are critical importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of our community; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services, programs, and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works professionals; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the community's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform; and whereas 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through May 25th, 2019, as Public Works Week. In Albany, and I call upon all residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public work services and to recognize the contributions that public works employees make every day to our health, safety, economic vitality, and quality of life. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this eighth day of May 2019. And I do know, I think they have been having some demonstrations at Farmer's Market, and I don't know if you know of any other activities at all?
We don't have anything specific, special for just that week. We're routinely doing outreach anymore, so we're in the schools, we're out at Farmer's Market and different events, so nothing in particular special for that week.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. And then, now we have a proclamation for Historic Preservation Month for May 2019. Whereas Albany is well-known for its large and varied collection of historic buildings that date from the 1840s through the 1950s; and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for economic development, promoting tourism, revitalizing neighborhoods, creating livable and sustainable communities, fostering local pride, and creating community character; and whereas it is important to celebrate the role and tangible aspects of heritage shaping our lives and communities now and in the future; and whereas this place matters is the theme of National Historic Preservation Month, celebrated across America and sponsored by the National Trust for Historic Preservation; and whereas Historic Preservation Month provides an opportunity for residents of all ages and backgrounds to celebrate the special places that are meaningful to them and their communities, and the importance of preservation and its place on all of our lives. Now therefore, I, Sharon Canopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Historic Preservation Month. In Albany, and I encourage all residents to take time this month to appreciate Albany's many historic resources and to participate in activities celebrating our heritage. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this eighth day of May 2019. And with that, then we have a special presentation for Historic Preservation Awards. Laura and Carrie.
[inaudible]
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 Is that getting it? Yeah. Okay, that's getting it. Okay. Okay. So, our historic districts contain a huge variety of architectural styles in a relatively small area, and they form a central part of the city's character. And I'm honored today to be able to celebrate people and organizations who protect, celebrate, and advance our historic resources. So, our first award tonight is going to Kenneth and Joyce Drake for the renovation of their porch at 924 Fifth Avenue Southwest. You both can come up if you'd like. So one of the predominant features of the 1915 Craftsman bungalow is the expansive front porch, which features tapered panel porch columns, open eaves, knee braces, and open ticket railing. The restoration work performed included the replacement of the front porch flooring with a composite tongue and groove material in the same width and height of the original floor flooring. This material will be advantageous to the often-used porch, especially since a portion of the porch is not continuously covered. It doesn't show up on the thing, but you can see that there's a clear roof line there, and then the other part is more open. Accomplishing this while maintaining the original of the porch is admirable. So, and I grew up near this house, and it's actually always been a favorite of mine.
[inaudible]
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 [applause]
Okay, our next award goes to Seth Portier for the renovation of the Tripp and Tripp Realtors George Nichols Bakery Building and M.G. Stettler's Grocers Sender Glass Building at 202 Second Avenue Southwest and 206 Seventh Second Avenue Southwest, which is mouthful, but it's also the home of Natural Sprinkles Bakery and Marge and Coffee, along with the mini hotel. So the recent work to this building includes replacement of the west and south second-story windows, exterior painting, and interior building renovations. The building looks really wonderful. This is the before, and there's the after. The building looks wonderful, and it's absolutely worth a walk-by. To those of you who know me, I'm a big enthusiast for historic kitchens and bathrooms, and the bathrooms and Marge and Coffee are worth touring through, even if you don't have another reason to visit. In all seriousness, though, the attention to detail on the building is really striking. So come on up and...
I did nothing, so I'm going to bring a fan like that, actually. My neighbors don't deserve to be on this.
Okay. Our next award goes to Scott and Spencer Letman for the renovation of the Fort Miller Building at 423rd Avenue Southwest. So this is the before, and pay attention to this, the drawing here. So they did their renovation relying on that drawing, which isn't the most clear thing that you've ever seen, but they did an amazing job of sticking to the character of the building, making sure to use excellent materials, though you can't tell from the picture what it was, and keep an eye on it, because soon they'll be adding new, those awnings that you see in the first picture, they'll be adding those back into the building as well. And one of them, you're going to use copper, right? Possibly? Yeah. So that's really exciting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our final award goes to Chief John Bradner on behalf of the Albany Fire Department for preservation and display of historic firefighting equipment and memorabilia at Station 11. So they have a 1927 American La France pumper, a 1910 steam-engine pumper, which is only one of a handful in Oregon, because most of them were scrapped during World War II, and they also have the hose cart on display. They also have the original fire bell out front and a display case inside that has various firefighting memorabilia. And I would also like to add our thanks for protecting the people and structures in the community, which of course includes the protection of the buildings in our wonderful historic districts. Thank you. Thank you.
So very wonderful projects that were done this past year, and great investment, too, in our historic downtown, but they're just beautiful buildings, so we can all be proud of them, and they'll still be looking very beautiful for another hundred years, so it's great. Thank you so much. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing. So just a second, I better read another script here. So on tonight's agenda is a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding a comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment for property located at 2000 Queen Avenue Southeast, the former Mega Foods property, as described in Planning File Number CP 0119 and ZC 0119. I call to order this quasi-judicial public hearing at 7:28 PM. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to Mary, the city clerk. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact?
With the original, with the owners of the property, as a city councilor, I worked with staff to try to come up with a solution to the problem that they had at that point, so I was involved. I'd been by the place to look at it. And the staff that did all the work.
And I also, I was in the same meeting, and I drive by there every day, many times.
Okay. All right. And do any members wish to report a site visit? I think all of us drive by that location, so...
Used to buy my groceries there.
Me, too.
All days.
Yeah. So do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? And does anyone wish to challenge the participation of any council member in this hearing and decision? Okay. For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. At this time, I call for the staff report. David?
Good evening. I'll start this evening by presenting a summary of the staff report. The applicants are B and E Three LLC, Lion Associates of Santa Monica, California, represented by Mark Shipman and Nathan Remiersma from Sawfield Riggs Law Office of Salem. The property in question is the old Mega Foods site, as you mentioned. It's located at 2000 Queen Avenue Southeast. So the applications being considered tonight is a proposed comprehensive plan map amendment that would change the designation of a 4.85 acre parcel from light commercial to general commercial, together with a concurrent rezone, which would change the zoning from neighborhood commercial to community commercial. So the subject property contains a building that's about 43,000 square feet, and it was built around 1990. Later on, Mega Foods acquired the property and occupied the site for about 18 years. At the time that the grocery store was approved, there was no maximum building size in the zoning district. However, businesses in that zone were supposed to cater to nearby residents in convenient locations. The zoning designation changes from C1 to NC by 1998, but despite that, the name of the zoning district continued to be called Neighborhood Commercial, so C1 and NC are the same one. That would be Neighborhood Commercial Zone. By 2003, the maximum retail business building footprint was limited to 5,000 square feet, and new lots in the NC zone could not exceed 30,000 square feet. So the applicants contend that by being in the NC zone, there are no financially feasible alternative uses for a building of this size due to its use restrictions that are contained in the development code. The building and size of the parcel are both larger than those typically contemplated for the NC zone. The applicant suggests that the property is essentially mis-zoned and submitted this application for your consideration. So there's a set of review criteria that need to be considered when doing a comprehensive plan map amendment, and so that is up on the slide, and it should also be covered in your staff reports. Same thing with the zoning map amendment. There's another set of criteria that have to be addressed in order to get an approval for a zoning map amendment. So as far as the comprehensive plan map amendment, the predominant planning pattern for this location is medium-density residential, low-density residential, light commercial, and general commercial. The requested plan designation is consistent with the comprehensive plan map patterns, reflecting a mix between light and medium-intensity commercial and medium-intensity residential land uses, and this proposal will not add a new pattern or designation that's not already represented in the area. Further analysis of applicable comprehensive plan goals and policies are contained in So the zoning pattern is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan designations. As this map shows, much of the area is zoned medium-density residential and commercial zones ranging from neighborhood commercial and office professional all the way up to regional commercial. A state regulation called the Transportation Planning Rule requires that zone changes be evaluated to see if the vehicle trip generation that could occur under the new zone designation is more than could have occurred under the current designation, and if so, if the additional trips would result in a significant effect. The applicant's Transportation Planning Rule analysis estimated that a reasonable worst-case development under the requested zone designation would generate about 126 new additional daily trips on the transportation system. Because the additional trips are less than the state's threshold of 400, as explained in the staff report, the change in potential site trip generation will not have a significant effect on the transportation system. So notice of this, of the public hearings, both at the Planning Commission and City Council, were mailed to property owners in the surrounding area on March 25th. The staff report that exhibits was posted on the Planning Commission homepage since April the 8th. The site was posted in one location starting on April 5th, and the Planning Commission held a hearing on April 15th, 2019, and no public testimony was submitted. As of 5:00 PM this afternoon, no written comments were received. Therefore, based on the analysis in the staff report, the proposed comprehensive plan map amendment from light commercial to general commercial concurrent with the zoning map amendment from neighborhood commercial to community commercial meets all of the applicable review criteria as outlined in this report. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the request.
Okay. Any questions?
Counselors have?
All right. Thank you, David. We will now be taking public testimony. As I recognize you, please come to the podium, state your full name and address, spell your last name, and make any comments you may have for the council's consideration. If anyone wishes to enter and exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city clerk. Okay. We did get a few that, or a couple people that wanted to sign up, and I'm thinking one of that signed up might not be on this item, but first of all, we'll see Mark Shipman. And then if you can, in the microphone, state your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. For the record, my name is Mark Shipman. I'm a land use attorney with Sawfield Riggs. We're located at 250 Church Street Southeast, Suite 200 in Salem, Oregon 97301. Sorry. Okay. Thanks, David. I'm here representing the co-applicants, B and E Two LLC, and, which essentially was the parent company for Mega Foods, and Lion and Associates, which is also an applicant. Lion and Associates is also the property owner in this case. We've been working with the applicants and the co-applicants on this matter for quite some time, have had multiple meetings with staff, both planning staff, public work staff, in order to present the application that you have for you this evening. As David noted in his summary, staff did a very thorough job in reviewing our applications, and we concur with the staff report. Our proposal does meet all the applicable approval criteria for the requested changes, and changing the zoning will give both of our clients the flexibility needed to be able to lease out the building and to be able to get a productive use back in that building to occupy the property and hopefully be able to drive more commerce to the City of Albany. As David noted, the Planning Commission held a hearing and voted unanimously to recommend approval of our request, and on behalf of the property owner and the applicant this evening, I would respectfully request that you move to approve the staff recommendation and the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve our joint applications. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Dick?
Any chance you can think of a grocery store back in there? Can we move Winco?
That was a good response. That's what happened, yeah. Okay. All right. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And there was one other that signed up, but I think Heath, I think you signed up on the wrong thing. Was it over this?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay. Did anyone else want to comment, testify on this proposed map amendment? Okay. Not seeing anybody. David, did you have anything you had needed to add?
No. Thank you.
Okay. And does anyone have any procedural questions that they would like to raise at this time? Okay. Not. I will declare the public hearing closed at 7:38 PM. And counsel, there is an ordinance that's on page seven. Would you like to have our city attorney read the first reading?
Yes. Second.
All right. Sean?
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4447, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan Map and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Zoning Map. By amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan Map and the Albany Zoning Map and adopting findings for 2000 Queen Avenue Southeast, Lynn County Assessor's Map Number 11S-03W-08CD, tax lot 211.
Move that the ordinance be read a second time and title only?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Second reading, please.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4447, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan Map and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Zoning Map. By amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan Map and the Albany Zoning Map and adopting findings for 2000 Queen Avenue Southeast, Lynn County Assessor's Map Number 11S-03W-08CD, tax lot 211.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion, Carrie. All right. Thank you. Yep. Good luck. Okay. And a quasi-judicial decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Okay. Thank you, David. Okay. Next is business from the public, and I think Heath, were you wanting to speak on that? Come up from business from the public?
It's about the ordinance, the ordinance change.
That, this would be the time? Yeah. Before we get to that ordinance.
Heath Casper, 33790 Meeker Hill Drive, Albany, Oregon. Just a quick point, I'm on the Airport Commission, and your changes to the residency requirements of the new ordinance coming out. There was a lot of conversation when the Airport Commission was formed about the residency of our local pilots. They come from a fairly wide geographical area, so we added the three outside-city-limit positions option for the city councilors, and you're changing that, so I was hoping we could, it's been working pretty well so far, so I was hoping we could keep it the same.
I think there wouldn't be any changes for anyone until their term expires.
Right.
Yeah.
It's been working pretty good to have a couple outside, myself and John Pascone, the outside-city-limit people now.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Questions? Yeah. Rich?
Do you have any idea what the percentage of pilots who use the facility are from outside, and I'm talking about who keep their aircraft at our location?
I don't have a percentage number for you, but it is quite a few of the pilots are from outside the city limits. We have a lot of visits from a pretty wide geographical area.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Heath. Anyone else from business from the, Lisa? And then Carrie?
So my business is also pertaining to the ordinance change. So I'm Carrie McQuillan, K-E, I don't know how my first name's spelled, McQuillan, M-C-Q-U-I-L-L-I-N. I'm Chair of the Landmarks Advisory Commission. My address is 525 Sixth Avenue Southwest. So I believe that there is value in having the mayor appoint these positions. The mayor is able to look at multiple applications simultaneously and build a diversity of knowledge, in our case, historic knowledge, and abilities that will create a broadly competent group. I can see other perspectives, but I do think that this is an unnecessary change and not a good idea. I am sure you will hear more than once tonight that the Landmarks Advisory Commission is a bit of an odd addition, though if I understand correctly, it was our commission that prompted consideration of this potential change. It is odd that three of our historic districts, it is odd in that three of our four historic districts are in Ward One. The idea that we need a perfect balance of representation from wards does not seem to hold as much water in our case, especially since those who are interested in and knowledgeable about historic houses and buildings may be more inclined to live in Ward One, and I think it's more important to have... And I think it's more important to have knowledge about historic districts and historic resources than just having broad representation. Representation is definitely important, and I think that you can see that the mayor has appointed people to the commission in that way. Further, our historic districts pose no threat to any other ward, but rather benefit other areas by creating a draw to Albany. Most importantly, though, I want to clarify the role of the commission and the existence of the historic districts. To have a historic district is to have chosen to place value on historic homes, buildings and features in the community. Albany has shown it values its history through the formation of these historic districts, and I believe that that has paid off. Much of Albany's draw for tourism, much of the draw for the shops downtown, I believe, comes from our historic districts and the character that they create in our community. I think it's important to address Counselor Kellum's comment that there aren't any commissioners who want to tear down houses. There should be no one on the commission who with an interest in tearing down houses. When the commission was created, it was to support the newly-created historic districts which came into existence because Albany determined that it valued its historic resources enough to create historic districts designed to protect our historic resources. Reflecting that, one of the requirements of being on the commission is an interest in preserving our historic resources, because that is the foundational value the community chose. Our interest in historic preservation is necessary to accurately reflect the values of the community. To want to tear down houses would be to advance our own agenda outside of the values that the community has established. That said, there also should not be, nor do I believe there is, a person on the commission who is categorically opposed to tearing down houses. In the right circumstances, I think it would be appropriate to tear down houses, a house. Rather, applicants come to us in a quasi-judicial hear, sorry, when applicants come to us in a quasi-judicial hearing, they are not asking our opinion. In fact, our opinion doesn't matter. Rather, we are asked to take the information that the applicant has presented and evaluate or interpret whether their request meets the regulatory framework that outlines our decision-making process. Of course, interpretation is impacted by opinion, but it is carefully channeled through those decision-making standards. For that very reason, there are seven of us, because interpretation is not always cut and dry. Hopefully, with seven, we make the best decision. It is essential to our function that the people on the commission have an interest in preservation and are dedicated to answering the question of how well a request meets our standards. If we callously stray from the legal guidelines that we interpret, we can find ourselves in hot water. And please note that we do disagree. Our last decision was a 4-3 vote. We take our role seriously, and to my knowledge, no one on the commission votes with an ulterior motive. We simply value our historic resources in alignment with the values that Albany chose as its own in creating the districts, and we do our best to have the natural and necessary evolution of those resources happen within the bounds of the regulations that the city signed on too long ago.
Okay. All right. Questions? Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Okay. Lisa?
Lisa Grotto, Albany Downtown Association. I just wanted to speak first for a moment or two on Historic Preservation Month. I wanted to bring your attention to a couple events that are coming up. The Albany Streetcar Historic Talk and Tour is being sponsored by the Albany Regional Museum. That would be going on in conjunction with the 115th anniversary of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10th. The event itself is this Saturday, May 11th, and reservations can be made through the Albany Regional Museum. Also on Saturday is the Albany Tweed Ride, where you will find well-dressed folks on bicycles going through the historic districts downtown and then going over to Deluxe Brewing Company's 6th Annual Vintage Bicycle Show. Something that can be done all month long is the Hidden History Scavenger Hunt Photo Tour. This is an annual opportunity to look up at various architectural elements and complete a form which is submitted and comes with some nice prizes drawn from those who've got the correct answers. Those can be picked up at the Visitor Association and the Downtown Association. So there's lots going on for Historic Preservation Month. Also wanted to publicly thank the volunteers who came downtown and did the spring cleanup ahead of the wine walk, and also in advance to those who will come help us on May 19th to hang the hanging baskets, which will be going back up next.
Were you increasing any of the hanging baskets? Was there going to be more this year or less?
I think all about the same numbers last year. Two years ago, we were down to about 80 because of the construction, and last year, we were back up to 100, 125, in addition to the ones that are around City Hall.
Yeah.
So I think you'll see lots of beautiful flowers. We went and interviewed some different basket opportunities, different styles of flower mixes, and they're already growing nicely and waiting to be delivered.
Can't wait to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else from business from the public?
Yep.
David?
I have a couple handouts here. Just a couple. So I kind of wanted to, my name's David Agar, 625 Ford Avenue Southeast, Hackelman District. So tonight, I would like to highlight the National Historic Month in Albany as well. This past Saturday, Friends of Historic Albany did a walking tour of Hackelman District, highlighting garages in ADUs and historic districts. The group had a fantastic time following the old Sanborn Insurance maps through different decades, looking for what is long gone, and outbuildings and significant ones still standing. So I found it just fascinating. You drive by these properties and you don't realize what's there or what's not there, especially in backyards where you can't really see stuff. On Friday, Landmarks and Friends of Historic Albany set up an outreach table during the wine walk to answer questions and shed highlight on the city's historic inventories. One of the key missions of both organizations is outreach and education for the people of Albany. There are more activities planned throughout the month of May. I highly recommend attending one and looking at the AVA and ADA's website to see what's happening in town. Please reference a couple of them. There are a lot of passionate people involved in preservation and volunteer hours that go into the activities. I just want to highlight how many people are dedicated to this in town. And then, the last few years I've been involved in LAC, I have nominated a few real gems that have been restored to high standards that have been able to shed light on the disregarded Hackelman District. So you'll see the pictures that's going around. I've moved into the Hackelman District in 2007. I will always call this my home because I love, the love of preserving the inventory there. And the time I've been there, many houses have been turned the corner from neglect to preservation success stories. Many houses were just shells, really nothing much left, and passionate people created a neighborhood that is just gorgeous. One house at a time is being transformed because others in the district are just as passionate about myself on these old houses. The districts are home to many great caretakers. And then lastly, I would like to highlight something that's always a topic of discussion in historic districts, and that's windows. Why are these important to the integrity of the house? Many say they are the eyes to the house. These old craftsmen windows, which are no longer available today, can be restored many times and last centuries unlike modern windows. Once they are removed, the house isn't quite the same. The handout that I, that's going around shows you examples that I took today of windows that are irreplaceable, and then there's a couple pictures there of windows that don't meet, that don't meet the AD or the Albany Development Code. So, and throughout the district, you'll see stuff that people have done to houses that really don't meet the code. So my home was lucky to have almost everything intact. That is rare for a house that's 180 to 150 years old. Things that get changed, thinking for the better through the decades. I believe that town, being such a blue-collar working man's town, helped with these people because they were meager and they didn't have the money to upgrade to the newest, latest invention throughout the decades. Some people in town don't embrace all of this, and I understand that, but the past is just as important as the future. What, the past defines who our ancestors were and how we got to where we are, and it makes Albany special to me. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see some council members at May's activities.
All right. Questions? Thank you, David. All right. Anyone else from business from the public?
Yes.
My name is Rebecca Ziegler, and I live at 728 Sixth Avenue Southwest here in Albany, and I'm representing Friends of Historic Albany this evening. The Landmarks Commission is a quasi-judicial commission that makes land use decisions based on Albany's preservation goals in the Albany Development Code, Section 7.3, and statewide goal five historic resources. As such, the members appointed need to not only have a demonstrated interest in historic preservation, but also experience in a related field. We commend the mayor for her diligence in selecting qualified individuals with commission-appropriate backgrounds such as real estate, construction, and architectural professions. Geographic ward location should not be a hindrance for creating a pool of qualified and interested individuals, nor should it be used to disqualify experienced individuals from reapplying. As the Albany Democrat Herald pointed out on its February 14th editorial on overthinking the appointment process, "It is possible that the end result of this effort by the council should turn, should, could be to turn the appointments process or service on these committees into a bitterly contested and divisive experience for applicants. It is hard to see who would benefit from that." So, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Rebecca. Anyone else that would like to speak? Bernadette, or Cameron?
My name is Cameron Suttermeyer. I live at 230 Sixth Avenue Southwest in Albany, Oregon, and historically contributing residents inside the Montez National Historic District. I want to know why the council is considering changing the appointment process on Landmarks Commission. What has broken on Landmarks that we are trying to fix? On Monday, I asked for a single example, was the Landmarks Commission denied an application without properly following local and state code as required? I am still waiting for an answer.
I don't know of any.
Madam Mayor, point of order. He is not here to ask questions of the body. That's not the function of this.
It's a rhetorical question.
Then don't ask for an answer.
I didn't proceed, Cameron.
There has been talk of appointing people to the commission from all wards for better representation. I have passed out two maps, one that shows historic districts and properties in Albany, the other Albany's Ward Map. So which ward is the downtown National Historic District located in? Looks like it's located in Ward One. But what about the Hackelman National Historic District? Turns out, it's in Ward One as well. Okay. Let's move on to the Montez National Historic District. Also turns out, this district and its residents live entirely in Ward One. There is one district in Ward Three, the airport. However, there are no residences. All the residences on the national register are in Ward One. So why are we mandating representation outside of Ward One? How is this better representation? Are we really going to disqualify experienced people on Landmarks from running again because they live inside the ward that contains Albany's historic districts? Really? Are you really going to find a qualified pool of people with demonstratable knowledge, interest, and competence in historic preservation outside of Ward One? If the integrity of Landmarks is diluted by cronyism, those of us that live in historic districts will have no choice but to appeal to the integrity of Luba to protect our neighborhood, even if that requires lengthy quasi-judicial reviews in front of City Council in order to get there.
All right. Thank you, Cameron. And I think I saw Bernadette's hand up? Yeah.
My name is Bernadette Neder. I live at 1116 Eleventh Avenue Southwest in Albany. I see no reason for reassigning appointment duties for Albany's boards and commissions because I do not feel the current system of mayoral appointment with council ratification is broken. I agree that the City of Albany, that it is in the best interest of the City of Albany to ensure that membership on various boards, commissions, and committees is representative of people in the community. However, I feel that qualification is already met when Albany residents serve on the boards. That parallels the citywide election of the mayor who makes the appointments. I want board members to be qualified for their positions and enthusiastic about their committee missions. It's striking in the ordinance that there are no references to qualifications by board members. I understand that Ward One residents make up over 60% of the commission members, and I'd like to know if there's a backlog from Wards Two or Three that are prevented from serving because of Ward One incumbents? Have councilors from Wards Two and Three made efforts to recruit commission members from their wards? Will they do so in the future in order to make a nomination from their respective wards? Will ward residency be prioritized over experience and qualifications? Finally, I am concerned that these modifications to appointment procedures arise from a City Council that wants to bend commissions to their will. The sensible language of the proposed ordinances is offset by council's prior comments and attitudes, especially regarding the Specialized Landmarks Advisory Commission. Counselor Betsy Johnson has made comments to the effect of "Counselors want more input into committees." And of course, Counselor Kellum has lamented that there are no people who want to tear down houses on Landmarks, a position that is antithetical to the idea of having Landmarks in the first place. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Bernadette. Is there anyone else that would like to speak under business from the public? All right. Okay. That ends that. And next is a first reading of ordinance, and, or counsel, do you have questions over the ordinance? Since this has been all, this was brought on Monday's work session. I think we're actually on page, actually page 48. Questions?
Do you want to read the first reading? Sean?
Yep. An ordinance amending the sections of the Albany Municipal Code Title II, Administration and Personnel that relate to the city's boards and commissions, modifying the residency requirement for members to serve, increasing membership for select bodies, and reassigning appointment duties.
Move for the adoption of the resolution?
Amy, it has to be read a second time.
An ordinance?
It's an ordinance.
It says resolution here.
Let's go back up to page.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Got it hit in myself. I would move to that the ordinance be read a second time and title only.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. There's, that's a no, so it will not be read a second time this evening. All right. So, does that mean we?
Bring it back up.
On the resolutions for the next meeting?
The first resolution. It's not related to that.
Does it have anything to do with the first one?
Yeah. Looks like it does. Residents' requirements for all future appointments. We just talked about residency requirements in the ordinance. I'd be pleased if you could sit them all at the same meeting, which we do a second time. Next meeting, and then maybe the next meeting as well.
Okay.
That would be, let's continue.
Okay. So we'll just delay F1 and F2 for the next meeting. So we'll just delay F1 and F2 for the next meeting. Okay. All right. Okay, so those will be taken up and for discussion at the next meeting in two weeks on that. We, in order to read a second time, it has to be unanimous with the council before the ordinance can be read a second time on that. Okay. All right. So that brings us down to F, item F3, and this would be establishing the fire life safety service fees. And it looks like we've got a fire department crew coming up here to guide us through this.
Good evening, mayor and council. The fire department currently assesses a fire line fee for private connections that are made to the water system to support sprinkler systems in residence, or excuse me, in a business or private hydrants that are on a commercial property. We also currently assess a fireworks, a fee for firework stands, hazardous materials, storage tank fees, and then a reinspection fee if we have to go back to a business multiple times in order to get compliance on a, on a fire code-related issue. The last time these fees were revised was 2016, and so tonight, we're proposing to increase the fire line fee to keep pace with the raising cost of providing these services, and then also introduce a fire plans review fee and an operational permit fee to help cover the costs associated with our department's role in these activities. Over the last three years, we've started playing a much larger role in, in plans review, and it takes up more of our staff time in order to ensure that various aspects of the fire code are adhered to properly in, in a plans review type of process. We've looked at other jurisdictions around us and what they're doing, and found that the vast majority of them, of cities of similar size or larger, do charge a fire plans review fee. And then the other one is an operational permit fee. The operational permit fee is for typically mass gathering events that occur where they happen after hours on weekends or in the evenings, and they require overtime for our personnel to go out and inspect those, those events. And so we want to try and recover some of the costs associated with providing staffing on the weekends and after hours to be able to do that. So, the monies associated with these increases will generally be directed to, toward positions in the fire department to help us with avoiding layoffs, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Couple of questions. One, your applica, the application fee for programs that are after hours, does that include parks and rec? When we do river rhythms or?
If we had to do an inspection, it would, it would be, across the board, it wouldn't be discriminatory, I guess.
I guess, if you're, if we, if you need to go look at it to make sure it's okay.
Right.
Obviously, I mean, you're going to be, somebody is going to be going and looking to make sure that when we do river rhythms, that, you know, so it would come from one department, go to another department in that case, right?
So, so a lot of the events that we currently do are things at the fairgrounds, maybe a horse show, or something where there's vendors and different things like that. River rhythms isn't something where we're going down and doing an inspection of that. Have we done that in the past?
We have, obviously. I don't think that would be more than within that category where we would charge, yeah.
Second, a, a plans review fee, is that pointed toward recovering cost, or is it pointed toward raising revenue? I mean, if it costs us 50 bucks to go do something, we're, we're asking for something in the order of 50 bucks.
Sure.
Or it costs us $12.40 and we're asking for 100.
Right, right. As much as we can, we've directed toward the costs associated with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Question for Gina. Do these fees currently go to the fire department as opposed to the general fund?
They go to the general fund, but many times when there are fees, we will allocate them to the fire department. For example, the amb, not these fees in particular, but like the ambulance fees, if they come in over estimations, then John may want to put money into equipment replacement or something like that, and we will come with a supplemental budget to do that. In this case, some of these fees, we are planning to use them to help with the fire budget next year.
Right. So, there was some discussion last night about these funds going into the, the general fund, and I just wanted to understand the procedure to make sure that they do end up in the fire department's budget. And maybe it's a procedural thing or an accounting thing that it's got to go to the general fund first and then be allocated for the fire department. But we've seen other cases where funds were dedicated for a specific use. A good example is the street maintenance fund that we talked about, that went into the general fund and disappeared. And I, I don't want that to happen again. If this is part of the solution for helping their budget, what guarantees do we have that, that won't change next year down the road?
It's, it's the council's will, which, where, where that, where those monies go. It does go to the general fund, and then if it's the council's will, it'd be used to fund nothing but fire department initiatives. That's what will happen with it.
So when and where should we make that determination? I mean, I guess, I have no problem increasing the fees and approving this. My concern is.
Should we say something about it?
Yeah.
Right. You're telling us now, if that's your, if that's your will.
Well, I guess my point is, and that's why I asked Gina, if currently that is the policy that was determined by this council or councils before, then it would seem logical that any increase would follow that same path. So I, I don't think we have a big concern on to do anything different.
Right. No, I think, you know, if you remember from the presentation last night, the figure that I had was that the fire department raises fees that bring back 37% of its operating costs to the general fund, so, by generating that revenue. So then the question is, how do you make up the 63% that's from the general fund? So, if they only generated 35%, you'd have to come up with 65%. If it was 39, you'd have to come up with 61. So it's the general fund that then becomes a cushion to make that difference up.
Okay. Thank you. And also, also typically in the past, what's happened is that the amount that we've estimated the fees have gone up gets added into our general fund budget, and then that's what carries forward. That's the amount that carries forward. If that makes sense or not, but.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
So, I mean, like, police department has no fees to, you know, to impose on anything, so, but really doesn't the police department assist on many types of calls, mostly if it's going to be a, a vehicle wreck and the police department's there and making it safe for everybody and the ambulance to assist? Should they be able to get a portion maybe of some of the fees? I mean, because they're kind of assisting.
Sure.
When it comes to some of the emergency services.
On the, on the fire line side, probably not, because that's more of a just fire and life safety division. On the ambulance fee side, they're, they're there on, some of those on the, on the wrecks and whatnot. Obviously, they're not going on every medical call, but they are also responding on motor vehicle accidents and, and other ones where we might request their services.
Yeah.
Because it's a domestic or something like that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So it might be something to kind of consider and see, you know, for them to kind of get their, their cost recovery piece out of it, too.
Just on that, if the fire department raises fees to offset what they're taking out of the general fund, where the police gets their funds out of the, out of the general fund, if the police, the fire department reduces that pressure, it'll automatically go to the police department. I mean, we're reducing pressure on both.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're reducing that pressure by doing that, in my, in my mind.
That would be true if we come to the point where it's even. Once, once it's even, then that's exactly right. Until it's even, it's still a hole in the ground.
Right.
Yeah.
But it helps reduce the pressure, is what I'm saying.
But you still have the same pressure with the police department. Yeah. There's no additional funds that they're able to kind of recoup.
They hand out a lot of traffic tickets.
If they don't get the revenue from that.
Yeah. Except people pay them, too. So, okay. Any other, this is the, the first resolution, council, which is on page 61. Did you have other questions instead on that resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in a second. And any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. And then next is the ambulance service fees. So this one would be on, resolution on page 66.
Move to approve.
Did you want to say anything?
Have you got a question?
Okay.
I'm just going for it.
I don't disagree with you. I've asked for this for five years, so it's, my question has to do with how close to, to covering the cost of the actual move to someplace does the fee take care of? I mean, we're paying people anyway. We have the fixed cost on the ambulance anyway, but the operating, of covering the operating cost and, and whatever else there is, actually out of pocket to get there.
Sure. So, probably, I can't give you a, a, a direct answer, but I'll give you an indirect answer. If you go to the second page of the council memo, and you look at the, the, the base rates of the different departments there, the last department is Bend, and their base rate is $2,336. Bend is the only department that I'm aware of that's actually done that study. They did an analysis and said, what does it truly cost us to do that? And they came up with, and they had an outside consultant come in, they had a consultant who told them that that rate was $2,336. So we have not done that, but a similar-sized city, similar-sized department went through and did that process, and that's the amount that they came up with.
I, I would understand that. I guess the, my, my question has to do with, you know, if everyone is in an ambulance and they sit in the station, it costs us all the fixed costs and all the labor cost anyway, no matter what. I mean, only the, the operating cost is the only one I'd be talking about. And if you don't have that, okay, great, you don't have that.
I don't have that.
Yeah. He said move to approve, I.
Could I ask a question before you rush?
Dick has a question.
I'll second the motion, so we can.
Okay. So who's the motion going to be from?
He did first.
Mike? And then Betsy second? Okay.
So Mike, Mike Sykes made the motion to approve the resolution, and Betsy seconded?
Yeah. Dick?
Are any of these private ambulance companies?
No, on that list, they're all municipal.
And are there any private ambulance companies anymore?
Yes, there are. Portland AMR is up in Portland, Bay Cities Ambulance is down Coos Bay area, I believe, Rural Metro, I think it's still there, no, not Rural Metro, Metro West, Pac West over on the coast, Falk up in the Salem area.
Well, I, I am, I am very glad that we got rid of ours that we had for a month, six months, maybe. But I'm wondering how their prices compare with ours.
The prices, do you know the prices on the privates?
The, I believe the, the first one here, Salem Fire Department, Falk is their contract agency, so I believe that that is their contract price. But I'm not familiar with what Metro West or AMR Portland are doing. However, I would assume Tuolumne Valley, Yam Hill, that's the Portland Metro area. Tuolumne Valley's one of the larger departments in the metro area.
So Yam Hill's a private company?
Tuolumne Valley is not. They're a fire district. But they're a comparable metro area department, so I would assume that they're fairly close.
Okay. And how do these rates in Bend, how does that warm up the public? Or does the public even notice?
I don't know. That's a good question. You'd probably have to ask them for sure. I, I don't know that we've specifically heard any comments, positive or negative, from Bend, that I'm aware of at least.
And have they been this high for very long in Bend?
I believe they did their analysis within the last two years, probably. So probably within the last two years, they probably elevated them to that.
So not very many people have been stung by it, I guess. Well, I'm glad we're more reasonable.
So chief, can I, can I press? So do you set the rates for fire med? Is that fire med, the corporation sets the rates?
No, we set the, each individual jurisdiction sets the rates for fire med.
So, when you say base rate and then aid call, would that be like a second ambulance? Or is that just?
No. An aid call is a call that we respond to, a medic unit responds to, and they provide aid. A, a, an example would be like a diabetic patient that is, is not conscious anymore, and we're, we're actually rendering some aid, utilizing some medicine to bring the patient back to consciousness or something like that. But when, when they come back, we don't transport to the hospital. We've expended supplies and equipment and obviously personnel time, and so that's a, an aid call.
Okay.
That, that type of a call does not get charged the base rate, plus the aid call. It's a separate rate of just the aid call.
Okay. Now, does fire med pay for that?
It would, correct, if they.
On the aid call?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. So, okay. Well, still, still seems reasonable. Because I know when it came to, you know, my car accident last summer for my husband and I, both of it was 5,800, and it was darn worth it.
Yeah.
And mostly when you're in that situation, you don't even care about what the ambulance bill's going to be, so you just want quality folks that are there.
Yeah.
So, just, but, okay.
People have the jaws of life to.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Yep, you bet. Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right. There's a motion on the table in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have the revised agenda. Council, so the one item that was under adoption of the consent calendar is now item five, which is accepting the engineer's report, financial investigation for the local improvement, improvement district. So, all right. Let's chat about this one.
Good evening, mayor and council. So as you had indicated, we are here for the adoption of resolution. Back at the end of March, Mr. Irish had presented some information regards the formation of an LID, at which time council-directed staff prepare the engineer's report and financial investigation, which we've done, it's included in your packet. Just to very briefly kind of summarize that, in that there's really only four properties or property owners involved in this particular LID, three of them being developers and the other one being City of Albany. City of Albany property is of little to no value. It's not developable, so in the assessment, the assessment was split up based on the sides of the creek. North side got 50%, south side got 50%. On the north side, it's one developer. On the south side, there's two different property owners. They were assessed based on the number of developable lots, and you'll see that breakdown in the financial investigation. So I'm really here to answer any questions that you all might have.
Anyone have questions?
Everybody happy with it?
I, yeah, I mean, they're, yeah.
Okey-dokey.
Happy as they can be.
Well, they're as happy as they're willing to say?
Yes.
Is there anybody besides Hayden Holmes that wouldn't be happy?
Well, the, the developers that are involved in this, obviously Hayden Holmes is one of them, and then the developer that's going to be doing the apartment complex just south of the Roundabout off of Knux Butte.
Oh, I guess there is Brandis, yeah, okay.
Correct. And then the other Brandis named LLC that you'll see in there is the, the second phase of what is now known as Brandis Meadows, where the residential lots are going to be. So, as our understanding, and we have met with, that those groups are working together in, in hopes to build that in front of the LID, so.
Okay. All right. Counsel, you have a resolution for this item, for accepting the report.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. All right. Thank you, Matthew.
Next step will be back on the May 22nd for public hearing, is what I hope.
Please, public hearing. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, then you have adoption of the consent calendar. You have several items there. If there isn't any items that need to be pulled off for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Okay. That took care of our business this evening. That took care of our business this evening, and business from the council. Bessie?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. Bill? Dick?
No.
Dick, Rich? Alex?
Not this time, Mayor.
Okay. Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to ask a question. Based on the recent school shooting in Colorado, one of the things that I read and was interested in was the fact that the schools had a police radio in the school and were able to contact police officers and firefighters immediately when the situation took place, which reduced the response time tremendously because they had access to the police and fire frequencies, and as soon as they got on the radio, every police officer and every firefighter in the area that had a radio knew that there was an incident going on and responded appropriately. In today's situation, I'm wondering if that can be done for the schools here in Albany and put that in place before there's an incident of any magnitude in the schools so that they have direct access to first responders at a click of a switch? And I'm just wondering if we can't look into that.
You know, we have our school resource officers, so probably the captain can kind of respond to that.
So, so I may add something as well. Monday, where something happened that one of my clients called me and said, my kid came home from school because there was something posted on social media about bomb threat or shooting, shooting threat. And so I called Maryland, and Maryland called the, the Police Department, and there was nothing at West Albany, but I'm getting calls like that from parents.
It was in the south.
But I know it was in the south, but I was told by this parent that it was in west as well.
And I just ran, and like, why did I run that down? I got the information that you received, and I spoke directly with the principal. Obviously, there was no incident. A lot of what we hear, you know, we just, we just went through this with a.
Captain, can you come to the microphone?
Evaluation threat, sorry.
We gotta hear ya, yeah.
This is, it's not really, it's an active investigation, so it's really not open for discussion. I can't really present on it, but what I can tell you is that when, when we look at information on active threats, especially very vague information, and that could be from old style, someone makes an anonymous phone call, a non-traceable phone call saying, ah, there's a bomb in the building. Well, that's, that has to be evaluated by the district or the person in charge, just typically the administration of the school, and to, to really run down or check the validity of it. If we really, if they really had to evacuate the building every time someone said there, oh, there's a bomb about every quarter for the test day, you know, said Monday's a test day, you know, our students wouldn't be in school very often, they'd be going out. And then parents would be calling in, and, and now I'm going back in time, this is how it used to go, right? But now with the advent of social media, you have twelve to fifteen thousand kids on social media going, oh, I heard it was this, and I heard it was this. None of this came about before social media, before we put it out. And so the social media makes things really run rampant, and kids, kids talk more, and then a parent sees a kid's chatter and says, my kid says it's over here and it's gonna happen at this school, and then it's gonna happen at this school. And you have to, you really have to evaluate that before, you know, the boy who cried wolf, we're not, we don't have enough resources, number one, but we're gonna really validly check what the threat level is and the viability of the information that we have. And so in the current one we had, yes, there was something that was reported to, yet not one, not two, but now a third school. And so that's, that would address that. It has been talked about previously for radios. Some, some states are, different states are gonna have a lot of different rules or regulations regarding access to that or public safety information, especially radios, because a lot of the information that we provide or give out is confidential. A lot of stuff that's on the radio, obviously, is not, you can scan stuff, but that access to it, it can be difficult. We do have schools that have direct communication, walkie-talkies are very good ones, and when the, on several of the schools, the school resource officers have a place to work when they're in the school and they have access to that radio, they can be contacted directly by the administrators. So we have that good communication for those school resource officers, but at this time, no, we don't have something directly for a police channel radio for the schools to contact us.
Just turn it on and, hey, I need help. That's all they need to say.
Agree, but again, you're, you're also talking about the ability or the need to consistently train anyone who's gonna be using it.
Keeping it secure so kids.
Keeping it secure.
Yeah. I just brought it up.
No, no, and I'm not saying it's not a good idea, but there's, there's a large cost associated with as far as sheer numbers of radios, and then constant checks on those radios that we do as a department on our own radios. So it's, it's quite, it's a quite a hefty price for those things, so I don't, I don't foresee it anytime soon, but maybe if there was a grant out there that said, hey, we would like to put a police radio in every school, that'd be great, you know, so. Well, the schools could, but I think they're as much of a financial bind as, as many city agencies are, so.
Yeah. Yeah, they are. Well, even the school resource officer, officers that we have, that used to be fully funded by the school district years ago, and then when that fund went away, then we ended up taking over that cost, and they still share some, but it's not a full cost recovery.
It is not a full cost, and we have, as I say, we have two, so we have two full-time school resource officers, and only funded one, so.
Yeah. So, okay. Is that it, Mike?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. And the only thing I had is coming down here is, and I, Chris Bailey's not here for Ops, but our new property that we bought on Thirty-Fourth Street, the grass is probably the tallest of any place in Albany, so I think.
Good thinker.
They probably don't have it on the radar that this is something to kind of maintain now, but it does look like you could probably get a Haybailer out there.
Yeah, next to the park. Goats, take care of it.
Yeah. Yep. Or some goats, yeah. Thank you. Okay, Peter?
Mayor, I just wanted to wish you and every mother here a Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you. Yes. Yep. That's this weekend, and Happy Mother's Day for everyone, every mother this weekend. Staff have anything else? So, okay. We do have Kara next week, but we do have, Monday, May twentieth is our work session, and May twenty-second is our regular session with that. Oh, Ed, did you have something? Yes?
I can let you finish.
Oh, no, go ahead. Come forward. Yep. Nope, I got it done. I was just gonna say we're adjourned, you just caught me.
I'm, I'm sorry. Some late, lately produced information for you at the Budget Committee last night, Budget Committee meeting last night, questions were asked regarding Maple Lawn preschool, and we did email out this information to the Budget Committee today, but just in case you want a hard copy, I'm providing it tonight, including some late-breaking information that we were able to gather late this afternoon from a couple of, well, one private and then the YMCA preschool programs as well. And so if you have any questions, you can raise them at the Budget Committee meeting, but I just wanted to make sure you had the, the latest and greatest.
Did you ever ask anybody on the history? Because it used to be called Kitty Craft, because my daughter went there for, you know, preschool, which would have been, you know, in the eighties. But, so I was looking in, you know, my archive of budget books, you know, on my desk there, and I, we had not had it as a city program until ninety-eight for funding it. Do you, is that about, and then it went to Maple Lawn preschool?
Yeah, and, and maybe I can give you the, a more complete picture at the Budget Committee meeting tomorrow, because I know we'll be addressing this a little bit more fully.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll certainly.
Yeah.
Confirm the actual start date.
Right. Mm-hmm. Yeah, because I couldn't find, there was not, three years before there was.
Yeah, it's, it's undergone a number of transitions, but it's been in place. It wasn't the original program in that building. That building was essentially purchased for just general recreation programming and rentals, not for a preschool. But the preschool was eventually the dominant and then the only use at, at that point.
Yeah.
Thank you again for the time.
Great. Thank you, Ed. Dick, anything else? All right.[1795.54]